Committee, it is Wednesday, February ninth, the current time is seven oh one P M. And as we do with each of our meetings, we start out by reading the mission statement, which is Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners, cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Sorry, I can barely hear you.
I know.
Are the speakers on? Turn that off.
Yes.
You can turn it off for now.
I'm happy to reread the mission statement.
That's much better.
With feeling.
Yeah. Can you emote?
Sorry, my emoting failed. Um, I can reread the mission statement if we like, or are we going to start with roll call?
No, okay.
Sarah Ward.
Shannon Manessis.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Madora Champagne.
Thomas Doyle.
Ginger Delary.
Victoria Saldana.
Gary Nectill.
All right, very good. Uh, so we do have some folks for public comment tonight, so first of all, thank you for coming. We appreciate that. We don't often get visitors, so this is kind of nice. So we had to dust off our protocols for such a thing, so I just want to kind of remind everyone how it works. Uh, we've got three scheduled speakers this evening, uh, so just a reminder of the process is please stand up, identify yourself. It's three minutes of time each you have to speak. Um, I can't guarantee it, or it's not intended to be a back and forth, so it may be you make a statement. Please don't take it as rude that we don't necessarily respond to. We will take under advisement what you said. We have both, uh, topic this evening, and then we have another meeting last, next week, um, where probably most of what I imagine you're going to be speaking of will be addressed in greater detail. So, um, with that, I think we've got, uh...
Lisa Sheldon.
Yes, sorry, my glasses on. Lisa Sheldon.
And just watch the course as you come up to the mic.
Learn how to hard work.
I tested it for all of you before.
Hi, Lisa Sheldon, forty-three Berkshire Street. Um, I first want to acknowledge that the past two years has not been easy for you all. And addressing the wide range of opinions in our community and responding to DESI's ever-changing guidance was no easy task. So I sincerely thank you for the work you have done to keep our kids safe and in school. Um, I, like many parents, am thrilled that the mask mandate is expiring now that decision-making power has returned to you. Please make masks actionable for all Norfolk students as soon as possible, regardless of their vaccination status. The CDC and NIH have stated vaccines don't stop transmission. They have also said that during Delta, natural immunity was stronger than vaccines. COVID vaccines protect the individual, not the community, so decisions about them should be made by individual families, and all children must be treated equally. Uh, my boys both have diagnosed speech and language disorders, and they've been trying to learn and receiving speech therapy in masks for almost two years now. That's forty percent of my youngest son's life. And they love school, and they've made progress, and that's a testament to our truly talented teachers and therapists who have delivered on almost an impossible task. To them, I am forever grateful. But as parents were often told, you know your child best, and that's true. And I know that masks are harming their development. But others think that their kids are doing fine in masks, and their kids are free to keep them on. Every child is different, every child has unique needs. A one-size-fits-all approach just doesn't work. Many Norfolk kids are already playing together unmasked. We have been to multiple birthday parties at the local trampoline parks, and the majority of kids aren't masked, and those who are masked, no one really cares. It's fine. Um, as we've been told from the beginning, and as the governor reiterated today, young children have always been at extremely low risk for severe COVID. But we can still protect the vulnerable without mandates. There will always be high-risk people that we must safeguard. But little kids using masks incorrectly most of the time is not the answer, and our kids cannot live like this anymore. We now have vaccines, antivirals, therapeutics, and robust testing capabilities. We have access to masks that are extremely effective in protecting the wearers regardless of what people around them are doing. This is a really good thing, and our policies should reflect this and should respect that people have different risk tolerances. We can't be myopically focused on eliminating COVID without any thought to the resulting damages in doing so. I'm pretty sure next week you're going to hear a huge range of opinions at next week's meeting. However, masking only appeases a select group and ignores the voices of many others. Mask choice for all, along with targeted actions to protect those who are high-risk, would address the needs of so many more of our diverse learners. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Shvalba. Uh, I live in Norfolk. I have two children at age all of day, and I also appreciate all the work you have done to keep our COVID numbers down during the last two years. Thank you. I am also here in light of Governor Baker's announcement today, and I do understand you have the separate meeting next week, but I'd like to share some thoughts and a resource for you before that meeting. I strongly support the lift of the mandatory mask mandate in our schools, and I hope you do not delay implementing it for all elementary school students, regardless of vaccination status. You may hear from parents requesting that masks remain, and I understand changes like this are fearful to them. However, King Philip High School already received the DESI mask waiver and currently allows both vaccinated and unvaccinated to attend school without masks, should that be their choice. It is a good decision and already well underway in our community. Even in the medical community, optional masking at school is becoming the preferred recommendation. To those still concerned, I want to share with you a growing group of over a thousand doctors and medical professionals who warn that continued masking children in school is doing more harm at this point than good. Their names and credentials are all transparently listed on their website, urgencyofnormal.com, and include support of various Massachusetts physicians practicing at Boston Children's Hospital, Boston Medical Center, and Mass General. I'd like to read to you their public statement and let you know after this meeting when I send my, uh, letter to you, they do have a toolkit for parents in school districts in this position. This is their statement. Policymakers have narrowly defined safety as the mere absence of COVID, putting children into a loop of mitigation measures that are uncoupled from actual risk. After two years of living with one disruption after another, the toll on children's mental and physical health is increasingly evident and alarming. Based on a careful review of this evidence, we believe it's time to allow children the same return to normalcy. Children's schools, athletics, and activities should be restored to the 2019 norms, and masks should become optional in U.S. schools. Do not treat vaccinated and unvaccinated children differently. Children are not a danger. I simply ask that you spend time reviewing their toolkit, which I will send, as I had mentioned, and you can share with other community members. I am thrilled it's finally time to make masks optional for students, let our little ones see the faces of their teachers and classmates, develop social and emotional intelligence, and finally see each other's emotions and be seen, which is so important for a child's development and a sense of belonging. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Lauren?
I can't, yeah, I can't read the name.
Babysitting service, nice.
Hi, um, did I just introduce myself?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Okay, so I'm Lauren Beves. Um, I have a first grader at age all of day. Um, so again, like the previous two said, thank you for all of your work the past two years. I know it hasn't been easy, and again, taking all of the different opinions and comments into consideration. Um, but so I'm obviously speaking tonight after hearing that DESI will be allowing the mask mandate to expire at the end of February and that the decision will fall on you. Um, I will try to keep this shirt, as I'm sure each of you is well-versed in the arguments for and against masking our children. We could talk about how we were insured that when the vaccines were rolled out for the vulnerable, things would ease for our children. How we were insured that when the vaccines for children were made available, things again would ease for our children. We could talk about how the U.S. is one of the few countries in the world who have even considered masking young children, especially in school, and how the European CDC and WHO specifically recommend against it. We could talk about the multiple studies done on school masking that have shown no statistical benefit. Um, we could talk about the trade-off in that although many claim children don't mind, it does impact their learning and their social and emotional development. But I feel like for the first time in two years, the tide is finally turning. More and more experts and trusted publications and newsrooms are finally admitting what we, many have thought all along, COVID is here to stay. We will not be ridging our society of this disease. The vaccines that we had all great hopes for when rolled out, although highly effective for personal protection, will not stop the spread. Finally, this conclusion is leading many states, even those that have had the most restrictive measures to relax many of these mandates, including masks in schools. In fact, at this moment, only fourteen states currently have mask mandates. This was written before I heard that we were doing it, but thankfully, we are going to be put in that category. So I have heard many arguments when looking at many countries throughout Europe, which also never, um, a majority of those countries never masked children in school, especially in elementary schools, that they are able to do so because their vaccination rates are high, and unfortunately, the U.S. is lagging behind in that department. The great news is that's not us. We, as a community, have done our part for what we were told would protect ourselves and everyone around us. It is time that our schools reflected that. I understand there are many parents in this community that are not ready to let go of this mitigation effort and are still fearful of the spread that might happen if we relax. I have great news for them. There are many things at their disposal to reduce the risk, to reduce their risk and their children's risk. All adults and children in elementary school and older can be vaccinated. One way masking works, if they invest in higher-quality masks. If they equip their child with an N95 to wear all day, the great news is that it does not matter what others are doing around them. They are protected. After this wave subsides, which cases have dropped approximately ninety percent in Massachusetts and are almost down to July, August levels, the percentage of students who are either vaccinated or have recently had COVID, or both, is likely near ninety percent. Additionally, masking only unvaccinated children is bad policy in that vaccines do not prevent transmission. Many of the unvaccinated children have recently recovered from COVID, including my child, who was recommended by their pediatrician that not to be vaccinated within three months of having that. So that puts those kids at a disadvantage. And again, those who want to invest in higher-quality masks can do so and be protected. I implore you, do not go above and beyond what DESI is requiring. They rely on their health and medical professionals. As they mentioned, they meet regularly with infectious disease experts to make their decisions. If they were recommended to maintain the mask mandate, they would have, as they have done in the past. As DESI Commissioner Riley stated this morning, and I hope you all caught the press conference, a direct quote, "He hopes all school officials and students will respect all choices around mask-wearing." Governor Baker stated that the CDC guidelines take into consideration status of all fifty states, whereas policies should reflect the status of masks, where our policies should reflect the status of Massachusetts and locally. He also stated, "There is consequence to keeping kids in masks, and we think that we should move past that." I do want to pose this question, in the chance that you do vote to continue to mask our children next week, what are you waiting for? If that is the result, every person, whether they are for masking children and continuation of that or against, I think every single person in this community deserves an answer. What will it take to take them off? I hope that I am not naively optimistic and being hopeful that by the time, this time next month, we could have little smiles gracing the hallways of our schools once again. And the best part is that in doing so, we would be consistent with what a large majority of this country is already doing and what a large majority of the world has always done. Thank you.
So as I noted at the beginning, we're meeting again next week specifically on this. Uh, it is going to be a virtual meeting, so you don't need a babysitter. So I would just like to say, I appreciate, on behalf of the committee, we appreciate all the comments. They were very respectful. I appreciate the information. More importantly, I appreciate you taking the time out, uh, to speak on this subject. We understand and recognize it's a very emotionally charged subject. Um, we'll take it very seriously. We'll take under consideration everything that was said. Um, so stay tuned for next week, but again, thank you very much for your attendance and and your attention to this matter. And you are more than welcome to stay here or leave.
Okay. But please, if anybody would like to stay, we're talking about next year's budget. I understand these are all important things. This is a very important thing. It's a huge component of the town's financial...
And H O D spacing.
And H O D spacing, and any number of issues that will continue to impact kids past the end of this month. Just my part.
Good job.
Thank you all. Thanks for coming. Thank you.
All right, so, moving on to correspondence. Uh, everybody's got a letter in there from Jen, Jennifer Nguyen, uh, that is in there, so I know...
I just wrote it as a parent perspective, um, just relaying my daughter and her friends' questions, so I just wanted to be transparent and wrote it as a parent perspective. My daughters want to, um, sit at a table at lunch, so just, yeah, just want to be transparent and share, relay their concerns, so that's it.
And Jen, I believe this will be on the agenda for, for next meeting, too.
For next week, yeah.
Yep, so all related subject matter will be discussed next time, so thank you for that, though. Uh, and then, moving on to correspondence, we'll need a vote on this. Uh, we have a donation, the amount of fifteen hundred and ten dollars from a few different folks here. Uh, Norfolk P T O is thirteen thirty-five for an N C L grant for H O D. Anna Tupper, a hundred dollars, Holiday Fund, Carrying and Sharing. Rachel, I'm not even going to attempt to pronounce that last name like Cargos, Corgos? Also fifty dollars for the Holiday Fund for Carrying and Sharing for H O D, and finally, Andrea Young, twenty-five dollars, Holiday Fund, Carrying and Sharing. So the total of that is fifteen hundred and ten dollars earmarked for H O D, so we would need a motion to accept that generous donation.
I move to accept all of the referenced donations as stated.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, all our donors. We sincerely appreciate that. And then, actually going on to Ms. Portson.
Great. So the first item in your package tonight is the draft of the proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school calendar. Um, you'll notice when you look at the recommended calendar, it's very similar to the current school, uh, structure of the current school calendar. The major changes in the proposed calendar are that we, um, were notified that September seventh is the now established date for the state primary. Typically, for security purposes, we close school on that day to allow the public into the building, because Freeman Kennedy is a voting site. So you'll note that we are recommending moving the traditional full-day October Professional Development Day to the sixth, I'm sorry, the sixth of September, which is the Tuesday Election Day. Um, other than that, the calendar is very consistent with what we've had in the past. We are also recommending in December that the Friday, December twenty-third, be a no-school day, um, and that would be the day that the winter break starts. With this proposal, the last day of school would be June fifteenth, with five scheduled snow days. Um, June nineteenth is a national holiday, so the five scheduled snow days would be the sixteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third. Um, I have shared the draft calendar with the Norfolk Teachers Association as well, um, so we are looking for a vote to approve the calendar so that we can post it. Many of our families, um, are looking for the, the schedule to make summer camp arrangements, so the earlier we can get it out, the better.
So do we have a motion to accept the school calendar as presented?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, we'll post that for our, our families in our next week's Wednesday's words. Um, the next item is our quarterly by, uh, by policy. I present to the school committee a quarterly report of bullying incidents at both schools. So by policy, again, uh, this, this past quarter, which went from November through February, there were two disciplinary reports or issues regarding bullying at the H L of Day school. Both were fully investigated by building administrators. We have a very strict procedure for how those incidents are investigated, and at the H L of Day, um, neither were determined to meet the criteria for bullying, although appropriate disciplinary measures were taken, and we also work with students, um, to better manage social situations, uh, going forward. At the Freeman Kennedy, we did see an increase this quarter in the number of reported bullying investigations. We had six discipline issues or reports regarding bullying, and again, upon investigation, all six of those were found to meet the criteria for bullying. Uh, appropriate actions were taken to support both the targets of the bullying behavior as well as the, um, aggressor. And again, per our district policy and our curriculum, we do have a, an anti-bullying program in place. We provide direct instruction to students at all grade levels. We use the Second Step Program, and that begins at kindergarten and goes all the way through grade six. Um, we are continuing to, uh, supplement those lessons, and also, we have hired additional mental health staff this year, as you're aware, through the grant, and have been working with families to support students, uh, as well as to provide direct counseling and support services in the schools. We are continuing to monitor the situation closely to see if this trend continues and if further action needs to be taken. Any, happy to take any questions that people might have on the bullying report.
I mean, you addressed everything. Um, I was, I just have, I've been doing this now for four or five years, and I just have never seen so many bullying accounts, so I'm happy to hear that, um, we have additional mental health. I think, um, that will be really important moving forward as well, that you're keeping a close eye on it, and that both, um, are getting help.
Absolutely. We are watching it very closely, so, and we'll continue to do so.
And the staff, obviously, is aware to watch, and like, are the support staff aware, too, to watch, like in the hallways and recess and...
Yeah, we do, we do annual training. And we do annual training on anti-bullying so that our staff are aware of what to look for and how to respond. Um, we also have on our website, if anybody has questions, the full bullying intervention plan and policy is posted, and there is also a bullying report form for people to anonymously report, uh, activity that they're concerned about. And we follow up on every, every report. So, uh, again, it is higher, and you're correct, that is the, probably the highest number since we've been here in ten years of incidents that have been determined to meet the criteria for bullying, um, and, and we have targeted additional resources and supports to address that. Next, we have Dr. Anna Tupper here tonight, who is, and Alicia, our lead preschool teacher. Next, we have Dr. Anna Tupper here tonight, who is, and Alicia, our lead preschool teacher, who are here to talk about the proposed preschool tuitions for next year. Watch the course.
Get a little workout.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you this evening. So Alicia and I come every year to talk a little bit about our preschool programming in order to have the programming and the rates approved. Just a little, you know, backstory. Preschool programming for three-year-olds is mandated through a federal law called the Individuals with Disabilities Act. And so when students turn three, we have child find practices in the district, and we have to go out and advertise and post in order to determine whether or not there are students in the district who may be eligible for special education services and who meet that criteria. So as a result, we develop preschool programming around the needs of our special education students. We do serve two types of learners. We serve learners who have, who are peer partners, and we serve students who have special needs. There are two types of preschool programming. We have integrated preschool programming, and that addresses programming for both our peer partners and our special education students. And then we have a non-integrated time and offerings where we're servicing primarily our special education students. So this year coming up, we have proposed, it's no different than what we had last year. We have two programs for three-year-olds. We have a two-day program that will run from nine o'clock until eleven forty-five on Tuesday and Thursday. And then we have preschool programming offered Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from nine until eleven thirty. Those are integrated three-year-old programs. We did extend the two-day program an additional fifteen minutes to have a little extra time with the two-day students. And Alicia can talk a little bit about the why behind that.
Yeah, it was just in an effort to give them, as Anna said, a little bit more time. You know, coming two days a week is, is a wonderful introduction for a lot of families into the preschool program, and, but we were finding ourselves just kind of not being able to do that extra little thing that the three-day program wanted to do. So in an effort to just not drastically, drastically increase the time, we felt that adding fifteen minutes to each of the sessions twice a week was an equitable way to address it.
We also have programs for four-year-olds. We have a five-day half-day program. We have, I know we have a full-day program for four, for four and five-year-olds, and so we do have a couple of options for five-year-olds as well. I feel like I'm forgetting.
And we have a hybrid.
Yes, thank you, the hybrid.
Call it a hybrid.
Yeah. We have the two-day, full-day, three-day, half-day model, and that's the program that Julie Gallagher teaches. And so those are our integrated programs. And then we have some non-integrated times as well for our students who are three. They can qualify for an additional hour. That would be staying from eleven thirty to twelve thirty, or eleven forty-five to twelve forty-five, depending on whether it's a two-day or three-day program. And then we have an additional half-day, four days a week for students, and we also have a separate full-day program for specialized students in preschool. So I think the only tuition rate that's a little different is for the two-day program, I think it went from one thirty-one to, one thirty-seven to one fifty, a hundred and fifty-one dollars a month. We've just adjusted for the additional time. And that's really the only fiscal implication at this point.
That was the fifteen minutes you spoke of?
Yeah. So it's an additional half-hour week, which is two hours a month.
That makes sense.
So, yeah, so just a small tweak and adjustment in the fee.
And just to, for the, for the committee, Dr. Tupper, in preparation for making recommendations on tuition, did do a comparison study of our tuition with the support of Alicia Whitehead and Susan Key to other area communities. And at this point, we felt that we were really fairly competitive. We're lower than a few, but higher than some others, so we're really right in the middle, and are recommending keeping the tuition flat and not raising them this year, although we expect next year that we'll do another comparison study and make sure that we're still holding with the appropriate market value.
We raised it last year, didn't we?
Or was it the year before?
Was it the year before?
It was before, yeah.
It all blends together.
And it had not been raised prior to that for a significant.
Right, right. I remember that. I just wanted to make sure we were going back to back. So, okay.
Yeah. We're, I mean, we're definitely, you know, in the range of everyone else. We have an hourly rate that we calculate things by, and so, yeah, definitely. But I do think it's worth looking at again next year. So, yeah.
No, I think it's good you're mindful of the cost, but by the same token, the cost is the cost.
Exactly.
It's nothing to do with it, but so, yeah, I mean, it's a fantastic program. It always has been. It's always, I've never heard a bad word about anyone it's attended. My kids went, they were great.
Yeah, yeah.
The only feedback we ever get is that we don't have enough space. And, you know, we would love to be able to expand, but we're going to talk later about the space content at H. Olive Day, but we do get rave reviews about our preschool program, and we have fabulous staff that run it. So they, Dr. Tupper needs a vote to approve the preschool fees so that we can publish those and prepare for preschool registration.
So we have a motion to approve the fees as discussed?
I move to approve the preschool fees for the 2022-2023 school year as discussed by our lovely presenters.
We have a second on that.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just had one quick question, and if I'm reading it right, in the, in the document we have, it says there are four types of programming, but I think it's actually five. You list five, but then it says four. I just didn't know if that should say five.
What page?
Right, it's the first page, right? Currently, preschool offers about halfway down. Four types of programming?
Yeah, well, I think they're going by the second sheet here, showing like the two-day, half-day.
Oh, it's the chart. Okay. So I was reading it wrong. Okay, got it, got it. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
And I think it's four types of programming for typically developing students. We do have a substantially separate program. That's the fifth program.
Okay, got it. Okay. Bye. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Look, DSE, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the sharing of the preliminary budget proposal. So as you know, I have been working on the, developing the budget with our Budget Subcommittee and our business consultant, Barry Necta, with feedback from the district administrative team regarding the needs of the district. Tonight, we have prepared for you a preliminary draft of the overall budget. The draft is, the current budget request is really close to fourteen million, five-hundred-thousand, and it reflects an increase of five-point-four percent, five-point-four-four percent over last fiscal budget. The preliminary draft would allow the district to maintain our level services, meaning that we would open the doors in September with the same level of staffing that we have currently. It would allow us to meet contractual obligations for step-in lane changes for our instructional teaching staff and our paraprofessional staff. And then we are asking in this budget to restore a position that was previously cut. So we cut the clerical position at the Freeman Kennedy office by point four. We're looking to restore that. It's been really difficult to run the school and operate efficiently with being shorthanded on the clerical staff. It also allows us to carry forward critically needed academic support. As you know, this year, we operated, or through the ESER grant, we were able to add some critical positions to the district, recognizing that students were coming back after a year of hybrid and remote learning. We added a developmental math teacher to the H. Olive Day School. We added a point-eight psychologist. We added a point-five school social worker. Those are some of the additional mental health staff positions. And then we also, through grant funding, added one-point-six paraprofessional staff to support the needs of some of our special education students. All of those positions were funded through grants that are non-recurring grants. We do feel, as we talked about earlier tonight, that we have seen a rise in bullying behavior. We do feel that, you know, recovery academically from post-pandemic learning is not immediate. It's going to take some time for some students, and we think those supports are absolutely critical to carry forward. So this budget reflects that we are looking to move those grant-funded positions into the district operating budget. If you turn to page three of the budget document, you'll see a summary of the budget changes. Excuse me. Again, you can see the cost of carrying our current staff forward, our teaching staff. All other staff would be our tech, excuse me, our technology team, our paraprofessional staff, our nurses, our clerical staff. And then we do anticipate at this time one teacher retirement, which will generate about thirty-four thousand dollars in savings. So this cost of just moving forward the current district staff is four-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. Carrying forward those positions that are currently funded by grants, the math specialist, the social worker, the point-eight psychologist, and the two assistants is also reflected in the summary sheet. Other changes to regular education, we have had a significant growth in our population of students that are English-language learners. They're, under the state requirements, there's mandated services that we have to provide those students in, in English language instruction. We have currently one district ELL teacher and a paraprofessional who supports that program. With the increased enrollment of students that are non-English speakers, we need to add another halftime teacher in order to meet those service requirements. We also have budgeted for an additional kindergarten session next year based on the projections from NSDEC and the town census. We're expecting that we may need an eighth kindergarten session. We've added a kindergarten paraprofessional that would support that program. We are watching that enrollment very closely, and the Budget Subcommittee will be meeting later tonight to review the current status and make decisions about whether we need to carry that forward. We are looking to increase math, a point-five math paraprofessional at the Freeman Kennedy. The area of the curriculum that was, had, was most impacted by pandemic learning was mathematics, and particularly in the upper grades. So we would like to dedicate additional math support to the fifth and sixth grades for students that need extra time or extra direct instruction in order to close achievement gaps. Other than that, you can see the, that in order to fund and support some of those positions, we made reductions to the H. Olive Day services and supplies accounts. We have, the FK is up slightly, and that's because we have new curriculum to support the SEL program. It's now transitioned to a digital format. In order to keep that program going, we need to buy some extra supplies for that. We are seeing a slight decrease in special education services, and that is because we have some students that are outplaced that are moving on to the King Philip region, so we have some declines in our out-of-district tuitions and transportation costs. We also have several students who have moved into the district, so we are absorbing some new out-of-district placement costs as well. Other than that, we have budgeted for the cost escalation for the year two of the transportation contract, and we have had to increase the, substantially the facility supply line because of supply chain issues. Paper costs, custodial supplies, cleaning supplies are all significantly inflated, and so we needed to adjust those costs in order to be able to maintain efficient operations. That's what's included in this request. There are some other critical needs that we are not able to fund at this time that are on the other budget priorities, which is the second column of the page. We have had, as I mentioned earlier, a significant increase in our special ed enrollment. We have a program at the primary grades that serves students with developmental delays or autism, and that program has grown to the point that we're going to need to split it into two classrooms next year. We will be looking to support it with a second teacher. But most of those students also receive related services, speech and language services, occupational therapy services. So on the wish list, we would like to see an increase in another point-five speech-language therapist, and also an education consultant to support evaluations for new special education referrals. You'll also see on the wish list, we would like to, we would like to increase math paraprofessional support more than point-five, would like it to be full-time, but we're only able to fund half of that at this time. Technology support, we have a very small technology staff supporting a massive network. We've talked about this a number of times at the school committee. We only have two technology break-fix people, and we have over a thousand users. It's really stretched thin, but we don't feel at this point that we can address that need because we're prioritizing instructional positions. Also, our library assistants at both schools are part-time. We would like to increase those to full-time, but those are unfunded district requests. Barry, do you want to talk a little bit about what we're assuming as far as state and federal grants?
All right, one more time?
Do you want to talk a little about the state and federal grants, what we're assuming in our budget for that?
Sure. So we have a recurring, mainly federal grants, our large special education grant, Title I, Title II. So we're assuming that those are kind of level-funded, and the same number of staff or services would reside in the, in the grants. The big change for us, as Dr. Aladi mentioned, is the, the, all the COVID grants go away, and there's a tremendous amount of funding, all but one, actually. We're rolling over a small amount of ESER III from twenty-two to twenty-three, and that has a small amount of staffing in it. So we don't expect a whole lot of activity in the grants, particularly in, in the COVID grants. I would, I would guess that those are, are gone. We did get a little bump in Chapter Seventy in the governor's budget. We qualify for minimum aid, so we get thirty dollars a student increase in our Chapter Seventy, not so, not so great. And other than that, it should really not be anything more remarkable in terms of grant and in either state or, or federal funds.
And, and the Chapter Seventy increase, that's monies that go to the town to support their ability to support the school budget. So that's sort of an overview of where we are. The Budget Subcommittee is meeting later tonight. We do know that the, the guidelines that the town sent, they were looking for three-percent increases for all departments, recognizing that the school has some critical needs. We, we know that we can't meet that, but we also recognize that five-point-four will be a difficult stretch for the town. So we are going to look tonight to see if there's any further reductions we can make prior to the public hearing on the budget, but I anticipate it would be really difficult to get below a five percent and maintain the level services. We'll do the best that we can, but this is kind of where we stand as of tonight. Happy to take questions for myself, for Barry, or for the other Budget Subcommittee members.
From a point of discussion, I'd just like to put out there, I didn't, a number that starts with five is a big number, right? We've never done something like this previously. Not recently, at least. I mean, maybe in the post-two-thousand-and-eight cycles, at some point that happened, maybe.
I don't believe so.
All of this is a direct result of what we have been going through educationally for two years, and it serves the students of this district. There's no, there's no way we don't need these things. Everything that is on the also-nice-to-have list are things that we need. In years past, we would say also-nice-to-have would be funding to restore a world language program. That is not on yet. We're talking about math paraprofessionals to support improvement in the MCAS scores that we saw last year. It's all necessary. So I, I feel very strongly about this budget, probably more strongly than I have in the past.
And I would say, as far as the budget number, last year, we did have an over-five-percent budget increase. However, the year prior, we were cut in half, so we only had a two-and-a-half percent, which is not really even sufficient to bring staff forward. So the town did make up for that in last budget so that we could restore positions that had been eliminated, but Mador is correct, in the ten years prior, we have never gone to the town with, in any normal budget cycle, with a number in this, in this range. Typically, it's been between three-point-eight-four percent and about four-point-five at the maximum. So this is a more, higher budget ask than we have brought forward typically, but we are in very atypical times, and we do have critical needs in order to support children in moving forward in, in an appropriate way following the pandemic.
And if I could just bang my drum one more time, the, it's always worthwhile to bear in mind every budget year, because it has been such a long time, and so much has happened in the past, recent history, the past couple of years. This district never fully recovered from the cuts that were made during the two-thousand-and-eight to two-thousand-and-ten economic downturn. The budget was absolutely decimated, as it was in many different districts. When we came back and started seeing normal budget years, it was never a sufficient budget year to catch up to what had been lost. We have been playing catch-up for fifteen years at this point, because enrollment keeps increasing, the student population keeps increasing, the needs of the students keep increasing. So to layer this on top of that, this is a necessary budget. You can't, I, I challenge anyone to come and look and find something that's not a requirement.
The public hearing on the budget is scheduled for March second. We are planning for that to be in this space. We'll do a full presentation. Public. Um, we'll do a full presentation, public, and take public comment and public input. After that, that there'll be an immediately following school committee meeting where the committee will consider feedback from the public and, and vote to approve a final budget number to move forward to the town.
One question, Barry. I know you'd mentioned the, um, the chapter seventy funding within what's proposed in the governor's budget. I had read a portion of that. I know, I, and I don't have the exact number. I think there was like six hundred and eighty million, uh, additional funding to the schools. Is that the, the, where you're speaking of, or is that-
Right.
Okay, I sort of make sure that I was understanding what you're speaking of.
And that's a needs-based allocation?
Yeah, most of it, uh-
Yeah.
Goes to cities and towns with high needs.
Yeah.
So, sounds great, but it's really not going to benefit us.
It's minimal impact for us. Other questions?
Think someone had something?
I do. Um, and maybe this is more for, to go in depth on, um, March third or March second?
March second.
I mean, the town is growing. There's no doubt. You can look around and see the houses and the families and whatnot, and it's wonderful. Um, but just from a layperson's point of view, looking at this, if it's pretty much level service to keep up with what I'm seeing here, it's staffing. It's staffing and then it's mandated special ed requirements that cannot be cut. You, you can't. So if what I'm seeing here, I mean, paper, that's nice that you cut the paper, like, that's great, but like, you know-
Yep.
You can't, you're not going to get a teacher for that, you know? What happens if it doesn't pass? Where, what I'm reading as a layperson, if I'm wrong, this is the point, correct me, we cut staff. And then class sizes go up, correct?
That would be a possibility.
Maybe that's more March, that's a possi-, that's a possibility.
Yeah, that, this is still relatively early on in the process, even though we still have some time. There, there's all kinds of moving targets that are happening. The budget's going to be developed. I mean, that's just the governor's proposal we're speaking of. We're now getting into the sausage making. We don't know how the legislature's going to weigh in.
Okay.
They've got tax cuts before them. They've, they are awash with money at the state house. So will there be additional funding made about? We don't know.
Right.
So, um, yeah, I mean, I guess that is one ultimate possibility you're describing. We are a long way from that being part of the conversation.
And I'm not trying to insinuate that there's going to be, but, but there's, it's, that's where-
It's a lean budget.
That's why you're asking for the five percent, because you're asking lower and we're, we're cutting.
Right. I think, I think what you're saying is, is there, there are no new initiatives in this budget. This is a level service maintenance budget. The only position that is, um, could be considered new is a halftime parat-, math paraprofessional. All the others are driven by mandated services, so English language learning and special education. So there aren't, um, any new initiatives or, or things in this budget. It's a level service, um, budget, and it's lean. It's, it's a tight budget. Um, as Thomas said, it's early in the budget cycle. We don't know if additional grant funding would be coming from the state that might help us, you know, mitigate the cost a little bit with the town. We don't know yet. Um, but what we are bringing forward is what we think is critically needed for the schools to continue to operate at the level we are at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the draft budget?
Yeah, I just, I just want to point out, appreciate all the work you all are doing. I've been looking at earlier today and now, just the past year, as Madora alluded to, the, the, what you all are working with. And, and how you're trying to still recover, but also looking at the two point six percent from twenty twenty-one, um, and trying to recover from all of it. So appreciate all the work and look forward to hearing how it all plays out.
And I do think we'll, we will go in more depth when we do the public hearing, but I do think it's critical. The, the town of Norfolk, the primary sources of town revenue are, uh, real estate tax and new growth. Um, there's obviously grants that come into the town, but there is not a lot of commercial revenue that comes into the town. Um, so budgets have been tight and difficult, and we really do try to work collaboratively with the town. We know there are other critical needs, but we're advocating what we think is essential for the kids to, to be successful moving forward. Um, and I would also say, um, you know, we will, we continue conversations with the town. As budget circumstances change, we reconsider and we make adjustments as appropriate throughout the process.
Yeah, the town has been a fantastic partner in the, all the years that I have done this and, and even more so in the, in the last number of years. So they listen to us with an open mind. They'll do everything we can. Yeah, I mean, there's a point where hard reality bumps up against. I mean, there's only, there's only so much money that's there. So, so we'll, we'll figure something out. Um, we, we always have, but, uh, and every year we, it seems like it gets a little more interesting to do, but we'll, we'll get there. I, I feel confident that we've gotten there for however many years I've been doing this, so we'll get there again. Uh, we got through oh eight and oh nine. We can get through this, so.
Thank you. Next, um, is the MSBA enrollment update. So again, as the committee is, is aware, we have been, um, monitoring the growth in town for a number of years. Uh, starting back in two thousand and seventeen, we had a joint space study committee, uh, that had members of the school committee, members of the public, uh, members of the rec department and town, uh, the town manager, building commissioner, um, and, and several other, uh, parties that were involved in really studying what the impact of new development might be on enrollment in the schools, um, and what implications that might have for services. We, we looked at many different options in, in order to find the best, most cost-effective and reasonable way to approach the growing, growing enrollment and the needs, space needs of the town. Um, we have looked at the potential for mobile classrooms. We've looked at, um, uh, potentially, uh, developing an early child center or a third site. In the end, the committee determined that the most effective solution and the most frugal solution would be to look at an expansion project at the Freeman Kennedy School. The Freeman Kennedy was designed as a model school by the state, and because it was chosen as a model school, you had to have ways that you could, um, the architects had to submit plans for potential expansion or for, um, making the school smaller. So the, the way this school was designed, it was always designed with the option of being able to build a connecting wing between the two back wings. We had a funding from the town in two thousand and nineteen to have architects design a potential expansion that would meet the growing needs. And based on the projections that we were seeing from NESTEC, which is an agency that we contracted to do an enrollment study. Um, the NESTEC projections were that we would see an increase of three hundred students in the Norfolk schools over a ten-year period. Our enrollment has, uh, the study was done in two thousand and seventeen and then again in two thousand and nineteen. The first several years, we were right on track with the, uh, enrollment projections for NESTEC. We have seen an annual increase of between twenty-five and thirty students every year in the school for the last four years. Twenty-five or thirty students is a classroom. So over the last four years, we've had an additional classroom almost every year. Um, the enrollment tapered off slightly in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Uh, so we have just recommissioned with NESTEC a new enrollment study. It's hard to assess the impact of the pandemic on construction growth and real estate sales in town. So we're not sure whether the enrollment's starting to trickle down or whether the pandemic slowed construction and we're going to see a, a spike in enrollment in future years. That said, we have applied twice to the Mass School Building Authority for, um, funding for, uh, to, to jointly fund with the town the cost of, of expanding the Freeman Kennedy School to meet the space needs that we have. Uh, as the committee is very well aware, we are completely out of space at the H L of Day School. The, uh, this really impacted us during that remote and hybrid learning because we did not have sufficient space to bring all of our students back early um, and maintain the appropriate distance and serve lunch. Um, this year, we've lost our computer media lab at the H L of Day School and our tech integration teacher is teaching from the H L of Day stage. As you heard earlier in the budget presentation, we anticipate we may need an additional kindergarten classroom and we definitely need an additional pre-scape of school classroom to meet the needs of our students with the global developmental delays. Um, in order to house those two programs at H L of Day, we are likely to lose our special subject classrooms, um, which, which has an impact on the curriculum and the way we deliver instruction. It is a critical need for the district that we get moving forward with this space study and project. Um, we do anticipate as that enrollment growth moves up to the Freeman, we're very quickly going to be out of space at the Freeman Kennedy School. Um, unfortunately, MSBA just notified us that Norfolk was not selected to participate in the expansion project for next year. Uh, the primary things that I think are driving that, uh, across the state of Massachusetts, MSBA did a couple of years ago, a comprehensive study of school building status and needs. Many, many, many schools, I think it's almost fifty percent, Barry, is that correct? Of schools in the Commonwealth are over fifty years old, have aging ventilation systems and are in need of replacement. I think with the COVID pandemic, districts that have old ventilation systems and need, are in need of critical repair are at the top of the MSBA list. Um, as such, we, we can certainly reapply again this year, but we, we think that we need to discuss possible next steps and consider moving forward with a request for the town, um, for funding for a feasibility study to see what the cost would be if the town were to move forward with this project without MSBA participation. Um, the budget subcommittee, uh, again, is meeting later this evening, and we are going to, uh, review the, the potential feasibility study costs and discuss the potential of bringing forward a warrant article. Um, and we will have a recommendation that we bring forward and discuss with the full committee on March second on that. So happy to, to respond to any questions or anything further with the MSBA or enrollment. Probably not a major surprise. I mean, we've been talking about it for a while.
Unfortunately, that sums up our situation, but, um, not much to do. We'll see what the future holds.
Okay. And then last for tonight, I have a recommendation for the school committee. Um, as you are aware, the, uh, state is now offering a new COVID nineteen testing plan that they've made available to districts. Uh, the, the new COVID testing program is a rapid antigen test that we would send home. It's an optional program. So both staff and students would have the opportunity to opt in. If people choose to opt in, then the state will provide us with rapid antigen tests. They will send, they will be sent home bi-weekly and there'll be a test kit with two tests. The goal of the program is to have people all test on the same day and to be doing sort of widespread surveillance testing for COVID nineteen. Um, that would allow us to potentially identify positive cases before students or staff come into the school. And then our nurses would be able to support families and staff members with the quarantine guidelines, the return to school date, um, and managing symptoms. If the district goes forward with, uh, adopting that program, then we would no longer offer the test and stay program at school and we would no longer continue to contact trace, um, clo-, uh, potential exposure in school. I think the thing that's really important to note in that is that of all of the close contact tracing that was conducted at the state level, which is over almost five hundred thousand tests, there is very little evidence of school-based transmission of COVID nineteen. Only two point nine percent of those contacts, um, that tested following, uh, through the school test and save program following exposure have tested positive. The vast majority of those are during unmasked times, um, lunches and, and times like that, but it's still a very low positivity rate. Um, again, in Norfolk, for our nurses, they've contact traced it over four hundred. Uh, they've contact traced way more, but they've done test and stay with over four hundred students. We have had, uh, only one case where we've had a positive result through the test and stay. So given the very low, um, transmission rates, it's my recommendation that the school committee move forward and adopt this testing program. I think that the school and the district would have better, but, better protection through optional, uh, family testing of potentially identifying cases. It would also allow our nurses to focus on, on symptomatic testing in school, supporting students who aren't feeling well um, and consulting with families around, um, meeting students' needs who might be struggling with COVID at home. Um, so it is my recommendation that the district adopt this. Um, if we move forward with this and the school committee votes today, I would order the tests and enroll us in the program tomorrow. It does take two weeks to get the tests in. As soon as we distribute tests to students and staff, then we would terminate the contact tracing. We are permitted to do that once the test and program, this new testing program has been implemented. Happy to take any questions that people may have on the testing, and then I would need a, a vote to move forward. Oh, I should also say, um, as per our district practice, I have consulted with the Norfolk Board of Health, um, both of our public health nurses and our school-based medical team, and they are all in favor of moving forward with this program.
And this is what they're already doing at KP?
Yep. KP started to, this week with tests or last week with tests?
Last week.
Last week with tests. Yep.
I'm just curious, like, when, if you test at home, do you have to send the result in, like, negative, positive?
No, so you only have to report to the school if there's a positive test.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we would support the families with next steps from there.
So it's not a report every time you take a test?
Nope, only positive tests.
Yeah. And it's not, I, just for the folks watching, it, it's not mandatory. Should we vote to adopt this pro-, protocol?
It's an optional program. A requirement of the state is that it be optional. We did send out a preliminary survey to see what level of interest we had in the community. Um, uh, at this time, I anticipate we'd have about a hundred and seventy students testing regularly and about a hundred, uh, staff members. So probably a higher percentage of staff, but again, um, students who have tested positive for COVID in the last ninety days would not be eligible to participate. So I think that's a really good, um, uh, it's certainly significantly more data than we're getting from current test and stay.
If I understood KP right, you can opt in and out at any time?
You can. You can opt in and then you could decide three weeks from now you want to opt out. We order the tests bi-weekly.
And the reverse is also optional?
Yep, you can opt in if you were opted out. Yeah.
Okay.
At any, at any time?
At any time.
The only thing would be like if Ingrid has to order on a specific day, so if you let her know like after that, you'd have to wait for the next round of ordering.
Yes, potentially if we don't have enough tests, yeah.
We know how it's going at KP. I'll give you that update in a minute. Excellent. Look at that.
There's an agenda. I'll follow the agenda.
All right, we do, we have a motion to accept the COVID testing plan as described.
Some more.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much. I will enroll us tomorrow and we will order, uh, order tests. And Sarah will speak to how it's going at KP. Um, KP did move this forward as quickly as possible. One of the things that was a challenge for them as a middle and high school, primarily the high school, students, when they're po-, uh, if you have a positive case in a high school, those students travel to seven different classrooms. They have close contacts in each classroom and then they have different lunch periods daily. So their very small nursing staff was contact tracing for every positive case, almost thirty close contacts. Following the return to school after the, um, uh, the December break, they had well over a hundred cases and there was just absolutely no way that they could, could manage that. So they did, they opted, they were early adopters and they opted in, um, a- as soon as the program was available.
Which is a nice segue to our committee reports. And Sarah?
Do you want me to start with that then, since we're on that subject?
Sure.
So at the middle school, there's two hundred and nine students that are opted into this program and, um, a hundred and ninety-seven high school students. And at the middle school, there's sixty-nine teachers and at the high school, there's about sixty-three. So it's about a third who have opted in. Um, like we talked about, um, if you tested positive in the last thirty days, you're exempt from the program. You can't enroll. Um, and you can opt in and out at any time. Um, that was really, he said it's going pretty well. So it should translate well to elementary school too.
Yep.
Um, the high school mask waiver is reinstated. Um, the middle school as of Monday is at seventy-nine point one percent. So he's carefully tracking that every day and as soon as they hit eighty percent, um, he's going to apply for the waiver for, um, the middle school as well. Um, there were no staff positives, positives in the last week. There were eleven students. Um, and that was really the COVID update that we got from Paul.
And Sarah, just as a clarification, the governor, because they're lifting the mask mandate on the twenty-eighth, they're no longer taking waiver applications?
Old information.
It'll be, yeah, it'll change as of the twenty-
Old as of Monday. Um, we, uh, the KP has received another digital literacy grant, so it's their second one, um, in the same amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's fifty-six thousand dollars they've received. Uh, for the rest of, one is for the rest of FY twenty-two, and then the other one will be used for the coming year. Um, it's going to be used for professional development and robotics and elective courses for STEM, which sounds really exciting and fancy. Um, they're going ahead with more, um, partnering with colleges. They met with Assumption University, uh, with the consortium, um, the ten other towns that are going to be, um, banding together. And they're, um, talking with Assumption about, um, opportunities for students. They're also talking to Stonehill College, which, which is exciting. Um, there's going to be an information night on the fifteenth. And this is for parents and students to get some more information about, um, a photonics program they have that partners with MIT. And this one-year certi-, certification program can earn you college credits at Stonehill or MIT or another, um, school, um, that has the same program. You don't need any math or science experience, which I found amazing, for something that I had to have explained to me. I didn't know what photonics was. Um, students in previous cohorts have actually left this program with jobs before graduating. They've had two, um, cohorts before this. And their starting salaries were sixty to eighty thousand dollars. So that got my brain thinking, maybe I should do this.
Great.
It would be about three nights a week at Stone Hill. There, there's no homework, but it is a pretty hefty time commitment. They are talking with Stone Hill to try and figure out how to get that more feasible for kids who are in sports and things like that because they don't want them to have to choose. They're also looking into grant opportunities because right now it's a little expensive at twelve thousand dollars. But it's a nice option for kids who don't want to go the traditional college route and still come out with an education and a pretty great job, it sounds like. So they're going to do that on the fifteenth and they might have others. If you're not able to go, please reach out and just let them know and there'll be other options available. Just a few other things. Wrestling might be heading to the state championships. So keep an eye on that. And DECA had all of their presentations accepted, which is amazing. And the first time that's happened. So the kids are doing great. That's all I have. Oh, we had our budget presentation, sorry. Just that thing, small thing. I can give you, it was the public hearing and, should have led with that. And Norfolk is going, our assessment is going up probably about, if I'm reading this right, three percent, which is lower than Plainville and Rentham.
That's way low.
It is.
That's very low.
I'm, I'm sold at three percent.
There are all sorts of fancy charts and explanations as to why it fluctuates year to year.
Has to do with the state formula and the number of students we're sending, but Norfolk is on the lower end of the assessment. I think Plainville's high.
Plainville's generally higher.
This year and Rentham as well. Norfolk's the lowest.
Plainville's coming in at six for FY twenty-three and Rentham five, as of right now. But if you want to see the presentation we got, it was very detailed and it's available on the KP school committee site. And yeah, now I'm done.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind, since we're giving a budget subcommittee, could, I don't want to take your only copy of that, but would you mind if we borrow that?
You can have it.
Madora will get it back to you, I promise.
I'll send it to the library.
Thank you. Is that it?
That is it.
All right. Moving on to policy.
Okay, nothing as exciting. We had been looking at some policies for the COVID nineteen employee vaccination policy, but we are no longer bringing it forward because OSHA, it's been not upheld in court. So it's a moot point. So we don't have to look at that anymore. And MASK recently updated its fiscal policies and, over the summer. And there's quite a number of them that we have to look at. So we met tonight and we decided as a subcommittee to break it up into four different parts. So we will, at our next meeting, be looking at specific budget, it sounds redundant, but budget policies. It's actually, there's other parts to it, the fiscal part, so.
And then we have a second meeting on the animals in school policy too.
There's no change in that, right?
There were no changes recommended after the last one. And again, this was the policy we were looking at per the recommendation of the public health officer.
I will not bring up my reptile lizard point, so.
I couldn't hear what you were saying.
Let that issue go.
All right. So we have a school partnership renewal. I'm sorry.
We have a second reading.
Yeah. I'm sorry. So we have a school partnership renewal for Norfolk PTO. Just as a reminder, they did make a nice donation this evening in unrelated news. So they've been obviously a fantastic partner. Couldn't ask for a better one. So we need a motion to renew the partnership of the Norfolk PTO.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that one? Assuming no. All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you to the PTO.
Yep, thank you to the PTO and to all our folks that donated tonight. Much appreciated. And then finally, we need a motion to accept the school committee meeting minutes from our January thirteenth meeting. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm waiting on Shannon. She was.
Yeah, that's right. We're not going to let Shannon say anything. So all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And that is noted before, our next, well, the meeting next week is noted earlier, but then we also have our budget meeting and regular meeting on March second. So any issues with the March second, that will be in person, next week's meeting is the worst of meetings, as a reminder.
That's the one I can't make.
Can't make March second. No worries.
What tasks can we assign while she's not here?
Oh, it's going to be awesome. All right. So no issues then with March second with the exception of Shannon. Okay? Very good. And then finally, we need a motion to adjourn to tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Do we have a second on that one?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.